Workshop 1614 is called to order. Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Andrew, second by Chen. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Two point oh, discussion topics, and we will start with Dr. Sparks on compass goals.
All right, well, if we can progress the slides, I have a team of folks. I would like to introduce one more slide for me, Callan. We have members of our standards-based learning task force that has been studying eighth through twelfth grade work for the future. We have Dr. Jamie Covato, Executive Director of Secondary Education, Dr. Eric Cochran, Principal of Lindbergh High School, Dr. Stacy Huberger, Assistant Principal at the high school, Patty Thomas, eighth grade social studies teacher at Truman Middle School, and Amy Wheatley, parent of a senior and a sophomore. So they're going to come up and join me here, and we will share the process that has been happening.
All right, I will go ahead and get it started this evening. I want to begin with the fact that we are extremely proud of the work and the learning of our current instructional practices, our grading practices. Our teachers here at Lindbergh are highly skilled, our curriculum is aligned, and our students are achieving. So then that makes you think, however, right now we're strong, but that doesn't mean we stop improving. So what does that look like? I found a quote from Arzano that really resonated with me. The most effective schools are not those that have arrived at perfection, but those that keep moving towards it. So why are we doing this? What is our purpose of a task force for the secondary? So again, like I said, we're proud of our current practices, our teachers, highly effective classrooms, but the traditional grading methods are outdated, and they've evolved. So this is my 28th year I can think of. When I started teaching, we didn't really sit down and have conversations about our standards. We didn't tear things apart and talk as teachers. We planned our units, and then we plan our tests. We give tests and we talk about it. But we really didn't dig deep, and that is what standards-based learning and standards-based grading is, is it's digging deeper into the learning of students. So how are we doing this right now? We, again, like I said, we formed a task force for grades six through 12 to start looking at where are we at right now, and what does that look like? And then what recommendations do we have moving forward to improve in this area? And in closing, I want to leave you guys with a thought before our excellent team shares out our work. We're not making this shift because we're broken. Things are not broken. We're making it because we believe in continuous improvement in learning and the opportunity to grow. So that is what this task force has been all about.
So and as we go to the next slide, I really want to emphasize the work of the task force and the people who are a part of it and the intentionality that happened. So we started this work back in the fall, and like all of our task forces, we use a design thinking process. So we identify what are the problems. We know we have some problems with high school grading and consistency, and then that alignment is a district. How do we empathize with the current experience of our teachers, our students, our parents, and then learn about what is possible? What are those best practices? How do we identify what's going to work for Lindbergh? So as you go through this design thinking process, we've gotten to the point where we've identified what are our priorities that we want to achieve, and we are in the recommendation phase right now. So we're ideating what is possible for the future. In terms of who was on the task force, it was really important that we had varied voices. We have some parents who have very strong feelings about the work about standards-based learning. We wanted to incorporate their perspectives and their ideas. We had a couple of board members. We have students, again, with very strong opinions who've been highly engaged in this work, and then our administrators and our teachers, who are ultimately the ones who have to transition what the recommendations are to the reality of the student experience. I think one thing that's important to note, even though this task force is about eighth through twelfth grade and where we go with standard-based learning, we were intentional in having sixth and seventh grade students, parents, and teachers on the task force because they have the knowledge of what it looks like at the secondary level already. So their perspective was really helpful in the conversations of the task force throughout each of our meetings. Next slide.
As a part of our ongoing work, we started the task force by first establishing a clear understanding of definitions and current practices in this area. We wanted to ensure that everyone was aligned as we move forward, knowing that everyone would be starting this learning at different points. To ensure a multitude of voices were heard, we did conduct a survey to parents and students of grades three through seven and teachers in grades K through seven. Their feedback has been critical in reflecting on current practices as well as shaping our next steps. On a larger scale, we conducted a national procedures review. So we explored what other districts were doing in the area of standards-based learning. We wanted to cast a wide net to gather as much insight as possible to educate ourselves with the best practices. On a local level, we connected with Hancock High School, where the principal presented directly to our task force. And then following that, a group of teachers and administrators conducted a side visit to the school, and these experiences gave us really valuable, real-world perspectives on how standards-based practices are implemented in their high school settings. Finally, we've partnered throughout this process with the Teaching and Learning Board Advisory, who served as a very valuable feedback loop, offering ongoing input, insights, and guidance to the task force. And together, these efforts are helping us build a more informed, collaborative, and effective approach to student learning.
Okay, so I'm going to focus a little bit on the survey results. As Patty mentioned, we had surveys done of our staff, of our parents and our students, and how they felt about what we've done so far when it comes to standards-based grading. First of all, most of, I would say, one of the trends that you will see is that some of the higher level of concerns and negativity, if there was negativity within the surveys, came from the secondary level as opposed to the elementary level, which stands to reason. Our elementary teachers and parents and students have been in that world for a little bit longer than our secondary world has. Some of the recommendations that our staff gave for improving this practice are here in bold. I won't go through each of them, but highlight, I think, the need for more clarity of communication among our staff and from our staff to our parents about what we're trying to accomplish and why we're trying to accomplish that. Some consistency when it comes to implementation. Our teachers definitely want more professional learning so they can do a good job of putting these practices into play, and then wanting to see some best practices from other schools that are doing standards-based grading. Technology needs are important as well. It is essential that we have a technology tool that is able to accurately communicate the grades to our stakeholders. And then the need for time. This work takes a lot of time. This work is messy, and the time is necessary for our teachers to ensure that they're able to do that work well. For the parent survey, which is on the next slide, definitely a lot more negativity in the parent survey. A lot of confusion, a lot of misunderstanding about our goals or purposes. We had 335 parents fill out the survey. Again, a lot of those parents were from the secondary level who, again, just didn't really understand maybe what we were trying to accomplish. Some of the highlights for them, a lack of understanding is the why, the what, the how, some fear of the unknown, a clear preference for the traditional practice. They just, they understand that single letter grade and what that letter grade means from years of experience in schools and in education from their own background, and so that is a comforting thing for them, and this is a little more confusing and outside of the box for them. And then I would say we have clearly a lot of work to do when it comes to explaining the why behind this, especially with our secondary families. I do, there are a lot of schools that have done this. There are a lot of schools that have done this successfully. Many of them go through some of this confusion, and we just need to make sure we're putting forth that effort to educate our community. As far as the student surveys go, we had 1,646 responses among our students. There was a mix of positive and negative, and some of those are somewhat contradictory based on the students. We had several students who felt this was more clear, that it was more helpful, that it gave them feedback that actually was actionable on their part, and they knew what they had to do in order to grow, and that growth gave them more confidence. And they found, in some ways, for some of them, standards-based grading to be more simple to understand. But conversely, we had several students who found it more confusing, who felt that it didn't make any sense to them. That confusion and that lack of clarity and maybe some inconsistency in our rollout increased their stress levels. And so therefore, they, like many of the parents, showed a preference for traditional grading as well. And finally, some confusion, and you'll hear a little bit more about this later. I think one of the challenges that comes up a lot when it comes to standards-based grading is what does meet expectations actually mean? And it means different things to different people. In our community, obviously, we are a high-performing district, and so how do you define meets expectation when, for honestly, many of our family, exceeds expectations is the expectation? And so trying to convey that to our students and to our parents consistently is a challenge.
And I went through both. Next one.
And I had the fun part. I have the fun slides. We had the opportunity as a task force to have the opportunity for standards-based learning to be brought to life because in February, we had the principal of Hancock Place High School come to visit us and talk about what it was like to not only implement this on the East Coast, but to bring it to us in our area in the St. Louis County. But in addition to that, we had members from our task force actually go and see it in action, which was a completely different feel to see it in action and to see kids living it, to see teachers living it. But most importantly was to see what it was like and how that actually occurred over a multi-year period. So when we went to visit, this was kind of a very shortened agenda where he talked a lot about the culture-first approach that they took, where it was imperative that the first year that they spent talking about the why behind they were implementing standards-based grading and learning in the first place. So they took the entire first year to do that and to really investigate why they were doing this and all of the reasons behind, and to really root out different areas in their culture, why they needed to do some different things. We took a tour of the school, which was student-led, and we also had a panel where students came in, teachers came in and talked about their different perspectives. And it was really cool with the teacher panel because we had brand-new teachers and we had teachers who were veterans to talk about all of the things that they've been through in this last three-year process. Next. So for as many people of, for as many members of the task force that went to tour, there is many different opinions about what was taken from the tour. For me, as a high school administrator, these were probably the three most important takeaways that I had. Most importantly, I think when we go, when I go anywhere to see any kind of practice or school or innovation, I think a lot of times we can think that we are just going to imitate that in our buildings or in our classrooms, and that is not always the best way to go. And that is exactly the message that we received from Hancock Place, that we absolutely need to consider innovation over imitation, that we can't simply take what we see and replicate it exactly as is in Lindbergh. So we need to consider very carefully what it is we're doing, why we're doing it, and how it will work specifically within our schools. To me, what was very powerful was seeing teachers, kids, and parents speaking exactly the same language, talking about learning targets, talking about goals, talking about assessments, and everyone speaking the same language was fascinating. And additionally, the last thing that they talked about that was really important was that everyone, it was an all-hands-on-deck, an all-hands-on-deck way of providing professional learning so that there were no other initiatives that were provided by the district when in terms of professional learning or other means.
So I'm going to talk about the priorities that our task force set. So no matter what recommendations that we present to you guys next month, these are the priorities that the guard rails, if you will. The first one is to maintain an overall course grade by semester. Currently now, if you get a standards-based grading report card, it's going to be by, there's not one meets or exceeds for that class, right? It's depending on what subject you're doing, the test or whatever. That's not going to be the case. At the end of every semester, there is a final grade, whether that's a one, two, three, four, meets, exceeds, A, B, C, however that is decided down the road. But there will be an overall grade at the end of the semester, just like there's an overall grade currently now in eighth through 12. The next one is that we're going to establish and sustain clear and consistent universal expectations throughout the initial rollout. This is what we saw in all the schools that we looked at. I mean, it's even printed. It is, here's how it works. It's this way of all departments, all grade levels. It's very consistent, and that eliminated a lot of confusion, and that is, that even goes back to some of the feedback that we're getting on some of the surveys. So we wanted to make sure that we have clear and consistent universal expectations even after the rollout. The third one is to promote academic rigor with clarity about what constitutes exceeding expectations. We've already talked about this a little bit, and this came through in the survey. There's a lot of confusion on meets and exceeds. So for some families and some kids, there was an idea that meets is good enough, but that kid, maybe meets is not where they need to be. They have the capability, so it was kind of breeding, I used the word slacking earlier, but they thought I should change that word, but I'm going with it. So a little bit of slacking, but then on the flip side, also you have kids who it's causing undue stress because meets is exactly where they should be because this is the subject matter, what they've learned so far, and now it's stressing them out because they don't have it seen. So just kind of eliminating that confusion and just making it really clear. And then that goes to the next one. Ensure actionable feedback on what students have learned and what they need to do to improve so that when you look at it, you know exactly what you need to have done to have moved up a level from meets to exceeds or still working on to meets, whatever it might be, three to four, whatever it's decided on.
All right, and so here's where we are currently in the task force. At our last meeting earlier this month, we broke up into small groups and we developed some, we brainstormed individually and in small groups what potential recommendations would exist. And what you see there in those bulleted items are ideas that I wanted the task force to consider as they were having those conversations. The ones that are bolded, like academic rigor, single semester grade, feedback consistency, those are the ones that tied back directly to those priorities so that we kept those at the heart of the conversations that we were having. I will tell you, based on the conversations that we had, I do not expect that we are going to walk away from the task force with logistics all lined out. I think we are going to walk away with some big ideas that are going to help to frame ongoing next steps, and then we'll work with the task force on how we continue to keep them engaged in the process on any further decision-making. Because I think the voices of our parents and our students and our teachers who have been going through this learning process is really important, no matter what comes out at the end of this first round of recommendations. The other thing that we are doing with their brainstormed recommendations, we have Teaching and Learning Board Advisory next week. As was mentioned earlier, they are our feedback loop for this so that we can engage more people in the conversation. It's actually the Teaching and Learning Board Advisory who began the brainstorm for priorities that the task force can finalize. So our Teaching and Learning Board Advisory is going to give feedback on the brainstormed ideas that currently exist from the task force, and then we'll bring that feedback back to the task force when they meet on May 12th and hopefully narrow down those big ideas that are going to take us forward into our next steps. So I realize we've given you a lot of information tonight. It's been a lot of work over the past, over the course of this year. What questions do you have?
So I know from the task force that we saw some negative survey results from parents and students. Are there plans to go back then to the elementary, to seventh grade and address those issues?
That has actually already happened as soon as the surveys, so we didn't just analyze those surveys in the task force. We also did that in the Teaching and Learning Board Advisory and then took that survey data back. It's in our system called Qualtrics, so the principals can drill down to that data by individual schools and look to see what their students and parents and teachers are saying in order to make adjustments. So yes, that is part of our ongoing work.
I know one of the big-
Oh, I just wanted to mention to touch on that. There was talk about, in a lot of the schools, it's consistency amongst all grade levels. And so whatever gets implemented in eighth through 12, I mean, I will be shocked if the recommendation isn't going to be, that it's going to be across the board, or at least for secondary level.
I know one of the big concerns is the transition post-high school into college. What, where are we on that? What are the, what are the local schools saying? Have we reached out? What's the-
And I think that's the benefit of the single course grade, because I think that's where people get the most concern. If there's going to be multiple grades for each individual standard, let's say a class has 10 standards that students are supposed to demonstrate mastery of, that is very complex to quantify, so that single course grade would address that. But that was one of the beauties of having Dave Williams from Hancock Place. He's, as was mentioned earlier, he's done this work on the East Coast. He's done this in very high-performing districts. He's done this in struggling districts, and he actually has feedback from a local Ivy League that he had worked with that it was, that they were able to really get good information about kids for admittance processes.
Just to add to that, because I get this question a lot as the high school principal, and I think people do kind of underestimate how flexible some of our higher, schools of higher education are when it comes to admittance. They are not just trying to navigate the various transcripts that come from the United States, but they're trying to navigate international transcripts, and so they have processes in place to do this. And I think we just need to make sure that our community, if we end up going that route, understands that our students will be okay.
Also, most of the schools that we looked at, they had a printed matrix that was published out to everyone, and so it translated to a GPA or to a scale that happened to always be one through four. And then also, a lot of them, it translated to a letter grade. So they had a matrix, so you kind of knew that they could provide so that everyone was kind of on the same board, and that would also be provided to those schools.
So along that lines, considering the higher education component, I know, as you've said, for years, I've heard, you know, it's great we have that extra grade point, but sometimes there are schools, and I would argue with them, why are you considering, you know, a school that doesn't have the extra grade point, the 4-0, to be exactly like our 5-0? Anyway, so my question, I guess, is, I know we're, because it talked about having clear and consistent, and I can't find where the other word was, but just descriptions of what all of the different standards are and how you get to certain levels for families and for students and for teachers. Would that be something that would also be available to the universities or to the secondary schools? Because as I have learned through talking to more people about this, they don't want to necessarily know what grade you got in a certain class. What did you learn in that class? And so that's why the standards part is actually the part that they want to know. So that will be available to the universities, too? Like how we, or are they, or is that too much that they're not going to want to see that for every student? Like, are they going to want to know what our one, two, three, four, our A, B, C, D, E's?
I mean, I think that would be the goal. The goal, really, the goal of any kind of transcript is it's a communication tool. We're trying to communicate to our families how their child is doing. We're trying to communicate to the universities how successful our students might be if they end up attending their university. And so I think we have a lot of flexibility and freedom to shape a transcript a certain way to, the key is making sure you have a very clear school profile so that they're able to translate whatever it is that we use into something that will work for them to measure.
Well, and I kind of remember there being discussion of like the high school transcript has like that key or that legend on it, you know, like just in the bottom corner or whatever.
I think that is a huge part of what is going to help parents understand-
Absolutely.
-why this is not as scary as it might initially seem. Because when I first was exposed to this at the district's presentation right before COVID with Rick Wormley, I went in highly skeptical, and I came out so excited about the shift, and I was highly skeptical at first. So anyway, I think this is wonderful, and thank you so much for the work you guys have done on this.
I just want to comment that, you know, as we start to go through all these slides and you realize the main reason everybody says we have to take all this time is because each one of these bullet points is probably like five or 10 meetings, just to figure out what actually practically happens with each one of these things. And so that's why time to do it right is so important. And as we go through and get into the nitty-gritty and the details, I think it's going to be really important to never lose sight of the why, which I know you said that there, but it's like even just halfway through the presentation, people listening are probably like, wow, this is a lot of work. Why are we doing this? And something that I took from being on this, on the task force, was listening to the teachers in the room who started doing this, saying that they have never worked as a department more closely than they have, than they're working now to make sure that they're teaching the students the same things, that they're grading them the same way, that they're trying to be more fair, and that they are becoming better teachers just through even trying to analyze whether we should do this or not. And so I think that that why message should be repeated every time we have a meeting on this, just so we don't forget it when we get down into the details.
Well, I will say this, you know, it was mentioned about the elementary. I know there's several elementary teachers that I've had conversations with will tell you they're a better teacher because of that. There's more clarity. They know what they're supposed to be doing. Jamie made reference that we would look at our stuff, we'd do our units, we'd do a test, and then we'd talk about the test, and it wasn't really ever about learning. And this really gets to the heart of that, so.
Dr. Sparks, you kind of mentioned, like, there's going to be a lot more ongoing work because it's going to be such broad recommendations, or you think there will be. And you kind of talked about like how to use that task force going forward. So I just, I want to make sure that, like, going forward, when we do get a little bit more nitty-gritty and detail, like, we will bring those, like, I'd still like to hear from students and teachers and parents especially.
I've started, and I'm going to share this with Teaching and Learning Board Advisory on Tuesday. I'm kind of, where I am right now, and I'm open for feedback on this, is to have a smaller steering committee that then goes back to the task force as decisions are made. I want to value people's time and make sure that we are not, you know, continually bringing them in for meetings and discussions when sometimes it's better to have a smaller group doing the deep dive, but still value their input along the way.
Thanks.
Those of you that have served on the task force probably already know the concepts that I'm going to share right now, but I wanted to say something to the why that Julia mentioned, and it's very personal to me, both for my own experience and for the experiences that I've seen my children have. As a young, younger student, and, well, I guess, just as a student in general, I didn't always, but I sometimes got the message that exceeds expectations was average for me. And that, I have learned, is where a lot of the perfectionism traits come from. And so unfortunately, I didn't learn that until I had a child. I learned it, actually, at a program that the gifted department offered when my daughter, who's now in college, was in second grade. So once I heard that, I started to try and look at the words that I used with my own child, because as you guys know, in our gifted program, at least in LEAP, we've been using meets expectations, are still developing meets expectations and exceeds expectations for years. And I will admit, I was skeptical at first on that one, too, and I thought, what do you mean? She's only at meets expectations. And my child would look at it and be panicked, why am I? And it took, it took repetition to explain, you are to learn these concepts, and it's not about performance and all of those things. But I know for myself, as I said when I went to that program with Rick Wormley, that if I'm getting his name right, I hope I am, I went in skeptical because that is not how I was taught. That's, and that's how my parents were taught. And so understanding the why, which is, not only is this going to help our kids learn the concepts better, it's going to help their social and emotional well-being. I think it's going to help them be more curious in the world as a whole. Like, when I'm in a group working on a problem, I'm not trying to find necessarily the right answer. It's what are the steps that we need to go through to look at? I just, it's, I'm, anyway, sorry. I am so excited about this concept, and I, I just think it's going to be wonderful for our kids, but I think that we do have to really get it right. And so that's why I appreciate that we're taking the time to see how it applies to our community. So thanks for letting me go on about that. It's a really personal thing to me.
I just want to touch on that. In all the schools that we looked at, that they had the printed matrix that correlated to a letter grade, there wasn't a single school where you had to have all meets expectation to get an A. Not a single school. So it was not perfection equals A, and we didn't see that across the board on any school.
I'm likewise really excited about this, and I've seen it in play. All, you know, both of my school-age students are in the standards-based portion of our district already, so I'm pretty familiar with it, and I like it as a whole. I want to make sure, you know, given the level of change that this is from what is the norm across the board, we're going to have to be very diligent about the transition, not only for our, our existing students, but I'm additionally concerned about those that transfer in, right? Those that come in mid-career, right? My, my eldest started here in fourth grade. And it would be a completely different kind of experience. And having those tools available and, and being able to uplift those new families into the district, because we are a destination district, it's, we're going to continue to see that. We need to make sure we consider that as we lay this out.
I think that's part of why the, having the final course grade at the end of the semester is so important. Because it's, when you end up with a final grade, it's really not that different. It's just how you get there that's a little different and a little deeper. And so it, at the end of the day, it won't look that different to people who are just looking at your transcript.
I think for me, I'm kind of equating it to the NWEA, you know, where we're showing growth. And this is very similar to that. So I think we're matching things up. And I think that's amazing. And thank you for all your work. Appreciate it. Anybody else? No? Okay.
Thank you all. And then Dr. Lawson is going to join me. We wanted to spend some time talking about standards-based learning because it was a part of this year's compass. It's also going to be a part of our work moving forward into next year. And we are excited to share with you the work behind the scenes of what happens in teaching and learning and how we take the big ideas as a district and transfer those into what is happening at our school environment. So Colin, if you can go to the next slide. We're going to show you the behind the scenes document of teaching and learning that really focuses in on what are our goals? What are our big ideas? And what are our action steps? Now, you, you will see them when we look at these examples. You will see these identified as priorities. Over the last few years, we've had two goals or priorities as a teaching and learning team. We have extended that to three this year, which we'll talk about. And then we've also narrowed down some focus areas under each of those priorities. And our intention when doing that was so that we could align those, the action steps better with the outcomes we're expecting to see. If you think to previous compass documents that we've had, there's a list of outcomes that we want to see from teaching and learning. And then there's action steps down below. But you can't really correlate which action steps go with which outcomes. So it was really important to us that we aligned that. And we used the full, the full teaching and learning team to have ownership of those different components. Dr. Lawson is our chief architect of this document. She brought it to the team and we started tweaking it as part of one of our, what we call big team in teaching and learning retreats. And we're really proud of what we've created. And then simultaneously, the buildings have a replica of it to, to align their work to the district level work. So if we go to the next slide, Dr. Lawson will start talking through that.
Sure. Well, one of the main goals for redesigning our compass for teaching and learning was to really make sure that we were aligning everything to our district's strategic plan. And so as you see, as we move through the priorities, we have the three. You'll see those alignments to the terms like academic growth, innovative learning, real-world experiences, and Lindbergh Life Success Skills. At the top, we have our priority. This particular priority, one, really relates to safe, supportive, and collaborative environments for our students. And that is our big goal. That is our big social-emotional goal and really aligns to our Lindbergh Life Success Skills. And then underneath that, we have now two focus areas, 1.1 and 1.2. 1.1 is really about those inclusive learning environments. And 1.2 is about that social-emotional learning and the character building that we provide for our students. And the focus areas really serve two purposes. And one is to really showcase where we, as a teaching and learning team, invest our energy to support our students. And number two, we have a team of 10 plus, including directors, coordinators, and specialists, who all contribute to the things that we do to make everything work within our team. And so this gives them an opportunity to be highlighted out and to showcase exactly what they are doing and to measure so we can see the accountability and the impact of all the things that they are putting into place as well. So in this particular strategy we have here, it's aligned to the focus area of 1.1, which is about that inclusive and collaborative learning environment. And the strategy underneath that is about attendance. And we have developed a new tier of attendance intervention that we put in place. What do we do for tier one, tier two, and tier three? And that has been a really, I guess, a clear document to show what do our building administrators do when we're communicating with families? What do our counselors do, our teachers, our social workers? So everybody understands their role and the place. And we also know that attendance is a big indicator of students and families who are not engaged in the learning experience. And so that is why we put that into place. And now we need to measure if we are having an impact. And so if you look to the right with the success measures, you'll see that building attendance rates are at 95% or higher. And we can track that. Our measure is embedded within our compass. And we can track it throughout the year at our teaching and learning team meetings to see where we are, where we need to make adjustments, or where we need to celebrate. And then in the future, did we meet that goal? And where do we want to stretch that for the future? So moving on to the next one, you'll see I'm just, you kind of have the idea of the basic structure of the document. But this particular strategy is 1.2. And it really has to do with the social-emotional screenings that we offer and the character building. So we're looking at how we're going to measure how our students are responding to our social-emotional screeners. As you may have heard, we're switching to Panorama, grades three through 12 are our social-emotional screening. So we have two success measures that we want to see. One of those is that our students are responding to the questions and that we are seeing our percentile in the 40th or above percentile for how students respond in comparison to their peers and those who participate in Panorama. So we'll be tracking that in the fall and the spring when we administer those assessments. And then going into, we also want to see our students participating in these screeners. And so we would like to have 90 plus or higher participating in our screeners in the fall and the spring. So moving on to the next one, this is priority two. This is a new one that we've added. This is about providing high-quality teaching and leadership by fostering a culture of continuous professional growth. You'll see that part of our strategic plan is about developing talent. We kind of share that with the human resource department. And so this is our opportunity to showcase what we do in the teaching and learning side of it. We have the three focus areas, model of instruction, collaboration and communication, and professional learning for sustainable outcomes. And then I can move through this a little quicker. But you'll see we have the strategy that aligns. And over to the right, you'll see a success measure. And what I want to point out here is sometimes our success measures are data points and sometimes they are artifacts. And so we'll be able to indicate exactly what do we want to see as a teaching and learning team at the end of the year when we're evaluating, what was our performance? How did we do? Did we reach all of our goals? And what do we have to show for it? And so that is why you'll see either a data point or an artifact. So if you move on to the next one, you'll see another one that's references the communication and collaboration. These are more just samples. There's more strategies within the full document. But these are just to show you how those success measures are added in and how we have strategies. So now we have an opportunity to see where does Dr. Hamby, Dr. Covato, where do I? Where does Dr. Mason, now Dr. Stabler? And, you know, Colin, excuse me, Mr. Davitt, and all of our team, and so many more. All the things that they have to do to contribute to the professional learning and the developing of talent within our department. Moving on to the next one, here we have that for sustainable outcomes. And then Tara's going to take on priority three.
All right. So priority three looks very similar to what we've done in the prior years. If you'll go to the next slide, Colin. It focuses on our guaranteed and viable curriculum. So this is where our standards-based learning work lives. It's also where academic achievement and growth reside. One of the things I want to highlight, and as Jill said, we just are giving you a snippet. There are many more action steps, many more strategies in this document. So we're giving an example from each focus area. One of the things I want to point out is you'll notice that there is a blue asterisk next to a significant number of what you're seeing on these, on these slide decks. Those are the ones that principals are required to include within their building plans. So we have some strategies that are just teaching and learning strategies. They do not have, while we'll collaborate with our building, buildings on implementation around some of those, they're not things that the buildings have to own. So if it is, has an asterisk, that means the building also has to be working towards this goal as well. Throughout the course of this school year, we have had our buildings do what we call scorecards and track their data. This again goes, provides a way for us to marry those scorecards directly with our compass documents. So everything lives in one place. And we can continue to monitor the growth of our buildings throughout the course of the year. So in this example, this is our academic achievement data, aiming again for that 80% plus of our students hitting within their grade level expectations. And that's going to be measured by I-Ready this year, since we are making that transition in grades three through eight. For I-Ready, it will remain the same in ninth grade for NWE, NWEA, because that assessment is still being used for our English one course in ninth grade, as well as algebra. As we go to the next slide, you can see an example of innovative learning. This is where we're focusing on our work around impact and the development of impact. And we're going to measure our success by the number of students who are enrolled and then this number of students who are retained. How well did it work for students? One thing I want to make note of is yes, this has an asterisk on it, but this is only eligible for the high school. Elementary and middle school do not have this on their compass. Moving on to eliminating learning gaps, learning and opportunity gaps. This is our multi-tiered systems of support work. Again, making sure, holding our, our buildings accountable, that they have a plan and we are tracking that. And then finally, we're doing so much work with college and career readiness. So our last slide really focuses on the expansion of our real-world learning core experiences. And notice who our primary lead is there, our real-world learning coordinator. So a great opportunity for us to increase our opportunities for students to have client-connected projects, internships, et cetera. So that's a summary of what kind of happens behind the scenes with our teaching and learning and how it transfers into the reality of our buildings and our instructional environments for students. Any questions?
I just want to say, I think this is so beautiful because you know I love a spreadsheet.
We're going to be tracking a lot of stuff this year.
Yeah. I, I, I think this is, you know, all these goals are great to have. But if you're not tracking the data, then you don't really know if you're making, meeting them. So I think there's a lot of work clearly that went into this. And I appreciate that you're doing that so that you can see exactly where we are at any given time. That's great.
Thank you.
I, I second that as I was looking through and, you know, I get, I get into the goal setting and, and whatnot. And I kept thinking through SMART goals, right? And I'm looking at these and, and the one that sticks with me is the attainable. That some of these are pretty high percentages. How confident are we that that's actually attainable? Is that based off data or based off of a, if that's where we want to be?
It is based off of data. We take a look at where we are currently. And then, so if you look at this example right here, increased student client-connected projects, internships, caps, et cetera. We're at 15% this last school year with having a person dedicated to this work. We think 30% has, is definitely realistic. Especially when you talk about client-connected projects, it can be integrated into any classroom on the high school campus. That seems like, whereas 30% might seem like a low bar, knowing we were at 15% is pushing us. But at the same time, it is, it is realistic because we have personnel dedicated to this work.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Thank you.
Yep, next will be Mr. Dominic Jaggi for technology.
Technology and how it's represented. Technology and how it's represented in the, I was like, aloud. Technology and how it's represented in the compass plan. So in the past, we, technology was under academics. And we thought that we do a little more than just help with the academic side of it. So we posed the question to the technology board advisory and see, how should technology be represented in this compass plan? So through their feedback, they thought that technology does support all of these. So in this technology, or in this compass plan that we're presenting, is technology will have action items under each goal that, all five district goals. So when you look at the plan, you'll see some action items for every district goal that we have that involves technology. And to achieve those goals, we have three strategies. We came up with three strategies to achieve those goals. So the first strategy would be foster a future-ready learning environment. So what we want to do by that is we want to make sure that we have equipment. When we purchase equipment today, that that equipment will be sustainable for the life of that equipment. So we want to make sure we're buying good equipment that will be, if teaching and learning wants to do something today, and also however many years we expect that equipment to last. So the, I have this ongoing four-year lease. This is something that we implemented five years ago. So we're on our first iteration of replacing it. It's been super helpful to have that on a rotation like that. So we know that teachers can, their devices will last and, and we'll be able to support the things that they want to do four years from now. Not, not today, but also four years from now. So this year was the first year we replaced the high school stuff. And four years is a good timeframe because last year when we were replacing the equipment, we were starting to see some of the batteries starting to fail. So I think four years is the perfect amount of time for it. And then, so we replaced them this year. They'll last for four years and we'll keep all of our equipment. Right now, we do have all of our equipment on a four-year cycle. This coming year, we'll be doing third through fifth. Another thing that we're doing for future-ready is AI software. Colin's did an awesome job with the stuff that, with, using the tools that we currently have, like Google, Gemini, and we also have Securely. But we're wanting to look at for next year, implementing some software that is specific to K-12. So we'll have the standards built in for K-12 standards. And it'll just be easier for teachers to use. So the learning curve will be, it'll be a little bit more easier for teachers and they can just start implementing it right away. So we started, we actually started that process this week. And Colin's did a good job setting it up for, we have several more software that we're going to look at and evaluate. We have a team of teachers that are evaluating it with us. And then we'll pick one of those pieces of software. Second strategy is enhance operational efficiency. We want to make sure that the tools that we have, that we're utilizing to their fullest capability. And we have the staff that can help support those things. So the first thing that I want to highlight is we use Securely products. We use it for filtering. We have, we use about four of the Securely products. And it's been really good for us. But we could get more data out of those products. So this year, we want to make sure that we're doing some professional learning with teachers and administrators so we can get more data out of those product, products and they can utilize that. The next thing we'd like to implement is evaluate the skills of our staff. We have an awesome staff in technology. But we want to make sure that they're prepared for things that are coming in the future. So we would like to do an evaluation of them, make sure that people are cross-trained in case someone were to leave, and just make sure that we have those capabilities for the future. ClassLink is something that Dr. Lake's been pushing me for since we, since, for the last several years. ClassLink will actually serve several purposes for us. It'll make us a little more efficient. It'll give us a portal into, all of our students and staff can log into a portal and it'll just make it a little more accessible that they can get all of the apps in one single place. The other thing that, an advantage for us, too, is we, we have two-factor authentication for all of our staff. And there's not really a good way to do that with our students. Because we, we don't want to make them use their phone or they potentially don't have a phone. But the way Securely does it, or, sorry, the way that ClassLink does it is they have, they use like a picture system. So we can bring it, we literally could bring it all the way down to the kindergarten level and have them be able to click on a picture to give us two-factor authentication. And the last thing is develop, on this slide, last thing is develop a technology survey. So we get feedback from technology through different surveys. I hate to introduce another survey to teachers. But I think it's really important for us to be able to track what, how we're doing over time. So I would like to have certain questions asked that we ask over a period of time. So that way, we can see how we're doing with support and make sure that they have the resources and the training for the software and the, the equipment that we're using. So I would like to implement that and do that, start doing a technology survey every year. And the last thing is ensure that we're using secure technology solutions. So the first thing on this list is secure all of our network ports using ClearPass. So currently, right now, when people are wirelessly connected to our equipment, they use that system, ClearPass. And it puts them in a certain network where they don't have access to things. So when you, when you log into something, you have to use your credentials to log into it. The way we have our network set up at the, throughout our district, when a student connects with our Wi-Fi, they don't even have access, the device doesn't even have access to some of the things that the teachers have access to. So it recognizes whether you're a true teacher or a student and it puts you in certain areas. And we want to expand that to our hardwired computers, too. And we want to expand that to our hardwired computers too. Develop and implement continuous cybersecurity programs. So currently, what we do with our cybersecurity, we do training at the beginning of the year. It's mandatory training. And then we also, throughout the year, we do some, we have phishing scenarios that we send out for people to hopefully not click on, but if they do, then they get some training with that too. So that's currently where we are with our cybersecurity program. What I would like to do is implement something throughout the whole year. So potentially, we'll be doing emails. We could do something, maybe go to staff meetings, posters and make it a little more, make people a little more aware of the cybersecurity. In addition to that, I would like to work with the librarians so we can do something with the students too. So it would be nice to send them some type of phishing scenario too, so students can start to see it. And then last thing, optimize employee onboarding and offboarding. This is also associated with Class Link too. So they have something that allows us to automate our systems. So it won't be something that we have to make sure that we disable a student and look at spreadsheets and get information from HR. So when HR puts an employee into our, into their system, it'll just automatically create those accounts on all of our systems and give them the rights that they need. The important part of the security on that is when HR removes a user from that system, that we don't have to rely on someone else making sure that that user is removed. So if HR removes the user from the system, it automates and removes that user from all of the systems and it just makes us more secure doing that. So we'll hopefully have those implemented this year. That was my last line. Any questions?
I just like your idea of doing phishing testing even on the students because I think your organization is only as strong as the, I don't want to say the weakest link, but the, the ones who are most likely to be fooled by it. And in our own, in my work, we just, the other day had somebody do a phishing scam that said, you know, we need these Xbox gift certificates. I can guarantee you, my son would be like, Xbox, yes! And so I think it's important to try to, try to fool them and see what happens.
Well, and two things, just a few weeks ago, we actually had a student's account compromised. Since the student account's compromised, they were able to send emails to students. And so two things, one, if we have Class Link and we have the two-factor authentication, it would be less likely that the student account would get compromised. And it's really important now because now it's just a password. The two-factor is super important. And then sending them, we actually had several, way more students click on the email than we would hope. So yeah, it's definitely, it's needed.
And I just want to agree with Julia and about the phishing thing because even in the employment world, there's scams where you apply for a job and they get you to fill out their application, then they steal your social security numbers so that, so that, so our students and everybody just needs to know, to be careful.
The phishing now is getting really sophisticated. It's convincing, but we're getting, luckily, we're getting more people sending, they're sending us some real things, which I appreciate that they're sending us real things too because we do need to evaluate them because the scams are getting, they're getting pretty real now. They're doing a lot of homework to, on, specifically on our district and know who the board members are and know who the superintendent is and they're really customizing these emails.
Awesome. So we're going to do a little pivot. So Brian, you're going to go next since you have people here to talk about your HR goals and then have you go into the classified market study and then have Joelle do her budget. And then if there's time, Beth and Joelle will do their compass goals. If not, we will put them on in May and they can present their compass goals to you guys in May. But we have to get the classified market study presented to you guys and we have to do the budget. So we have to do that. Somebody took a little too long sitting to my left in the middle with glasses on. No, she, she's always like, 20 minutes, 20 minutes, I look down, it's 45.
Why are we here? Aren't we here for teaching and learning?
Yep. All right. Let's pivot. Yes, we'll just double it. All right, so we're going to do HR, HR goals, classified market study, budget, and if there's time, Beth and Joelle can do their compass goals.
Well, thank you for, for letting us go first. I just want you to get ready. The next 47 slides are going to take you on a journey through the human resources, tasks and plans and initiatives for next year. So just buckle in and we will get started. We highlighted a few compass goals for you this evening and the first, we focus really everything that we do largely on retaining and recruiting. And we always put retention first because I heard Andy say this is a destination district and that's true also for educators. We want them to stay here. And so one of the best ways to do that is to recognize, acknowledge and show people how much we value them. So we currently have a, a teacher of the year program. We have a support staff person of the year program. What we don't have is a leadership program to celebrate our leaders. So give credit to Tara Sparks. She was at a conference. She heard about another district doing this, passed the tip our way. And we thought there's no reason we couldn't, we couldn't add a third, you know, a third strand to our program. So next year, we will begin not only our teacher of the year program, we'll continue, we'll continue our support staff, but we will add a leader of the year as part of that program. And we're looking forward to recognizing the great work that they do as well. So that's quick, quick on that. And then the, the next one that I will talk about, I want to update the group on our teacher, let's see, where are we? This is teacher evaluation. So this has been a multi-year project, as it should be. We started last year in studying the model of instruction. A lot of professional development through the teaching and learning department that touched every, every teacher, kindergarten through 12th grade. We are all now very clear on what the model of instruction is. And we have since, a smaller task force has since built a prototype of our teacher evaluation instrument. So there are several feedback loops for this to go through. So the next piece is to run this through our teaching and learning executives, secondary and elementary education, make sure that they agree and if there's anything they want to add, then we'll take it back to our large committee and another, more feedback. Our plan is to, by the fall of next school year, '25, '26, to have an instrument that we can pilot with the 40 or so people that were on the committee. So all of next year will be a pilot year. That small group who's, uses this, is evaluated by this tool, will give us comments, feedback. And then a year from then, we will implement this for the entire staff. So that's where we are with the teacher evaluation system. Before I move on to our classified items, is there anything that I can answer from a question standpoint? If not, our next slide, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Mock and she's got some exciting work to highlight as well.
All right, thank you so much. So both of the compass goals I'm sharing with you all today definitely align with our strategy in human resources and that's to recruit and retain a premier workforce to better serve our students. So you'll kind of notice a theme that we really feel in Limburg that we want to grow our own. So we recognize that in our employees, we have immense talent as well as in our student groups too. And so we feel in human resources, it's really our job to empower and invest in our people, to see them rise within our own organization. And so this first compass goal is in the research phase and it's very much grounded in heart and strategy in that we would like to give an opportunity, an employment opportunity to our students, our former essential skills students. So the why behind this, we want to really provide purpose for our essential skills students and show them that when they graduate from Limburg schools, their journey doesn't end there and that we, we can create opportunities for them. We also feel that this would value, give value to our current students. So having them interact with students of varying abilities, interacting with people that are different from them would really, you know, build that empathy and give them that social understanding that we're all really looking for our students to leave our schools with. So who are we talking about? So right now, our essential skills program at the secondary level has about 47 students in it. Currently at the high school, they said this is the most they've ever had. So they have 25 students and the number that they graduate each year kind of varies. And what this would do would, we would work with the student and find an opportunity of something that interests them. So whether it's a building assistant position or it could be helping in the classroom, we would just give them a place to go and some purpose. This kind of formed as we've recently employed some building assistants and just some people in different roles that have varying abilities and honestly, the impact has been immeasurable. So not only for the employees themselves, but for our current students. So the timeline will be very intentional and phased. So we're in the research, you know, portion right now, so maybe work with some other districts to see if they have any programs like this or other companies. Start really small and then hopefully to expand district-wide. We really feel this is, you know, the best of Limburg, just showing that we have opportunity and growth and that you belong. So if you go to the next slide, so this was our compass goal for this year was the implementation of the Support Staff Leadership Academy. And then if you go to the next slide, these are kind of our program highlights. So the, this was our first ever cohort that we had. We had 16 people. We were a very diverse group. We had maintenance workers, custodians, administrative assistants, building assistants, teacher assistants. So some of our program highlights, we started with Strength Finder and each of them kind of reflected on how they could best lead from their strengths. We did sessions on courageous conversations and active listening. Each support staff member was paired with a classified mentor and they spent time shadowing them and interviewing them and really understanding their leadership journey and how they got to where they are today. Our most recent session, we did resume building and we took all of their experiences that they had and just helped them put it into a professional resume and tell their story. We had our amazing assistant principals come to this session and they were each paired with a support staff member and each support staff member left with a resume. I know this is very much in the ground level, but we have already seen some success from it. So we've had administrative assistant move to the district registrar position. We've had custodians that have pursued lead custodian roles. And then we have people like within our, our own department that have asked for more responsibility and just seeking that leadership opportunity. So here to kind of give a firsthand account, I have Emily Lee. She's the office building assistant at Long Elementary. And then Mike Gillum, he is a maintenance employee, but also I might add, central office support person of the year.
Hi, everybody. I'm Emily Lee, building assistant at Long, work in the office with Lynn. It's my sixth year. And participating in the Support Staff Academy really did have a meaningful impact for me. It strengthened my leadership skills, especially in understanding how communication shapes who I am as a leader. We had a guest speaker come and present who really emphasized the connection between effective communication and strong leadership. And this insight has really stayed with me and continues to influence how I lead within my own building. Secondly, it has allowed me to grow in confidence. I feel more prepared to take on leadership roles and contribute more fully to my team and school community. And then finally, the opportunity to network with staff across schools and departments was truly invaluable. And these connections will be especially helpful as I pursue full-time opportunities within the district in the next coming years. So, thank you.
How y'all doing, Thumbs Up Thursday? My name is Mike Gillum. I've been here for 26 years as an electrician in the maintenance department. I'm kind of reading this, but off the side too, I like to say thank you for allowing the Support Staff Leadership Program to occur. It does, I don't know, it, it makes us feel valuable for not being a teacher. So I've, I've learned that Limburg is willing to invest in their personnel. I did the handbook committee years ago, which has gone away. I did the, I forgot the other one. The insurance committee was on there and then I was fortunate enough to be on Lakes Advisory Committee. So I got to dabble with that little bit of leadership stuff and listen and it really enjoyed it. So I, doing the administrative stuff is, is providing an opportunity of positive encouragement and support to us employees. It's kind of better to treat those or, I'm sorry, I done this one, I'm sorry. This kind of investment encourages those who are willing to seek higher positions, to better treat those around them and to stay employed with the district. I've enjoyed being able to spend time and grow with the folks from the many different departments and learning different things that they do and how we all tie together. It's given me a lot of, a lot more confidence and the program has potential to build, I feel like the potent, this program has the potential to build great teams, strengthen individual characters and make Limburg a stronger family. Glad you got to meet me and thank you.
Hey, Ally, on the resume building, that's really just make sure that it's to find other jobs in our district, not to leave us.
I know, I tailored it very much to Limburg.
Yeah, we don't need to really help them too much with their resumes if they're going to leave us.
They're not.
I just, and I wanted, you mentioned like to kind of meet people in other positions and find out what they do. Like it's not even something that crossed my mind when you guys discussed this and I think that's really a nice thing that kind of came out of it, like build more camaraderie and make us all work together. So thanks for sharing that.
And I'd also just want to like echo to what you're saying, like you are so valuable. And so just thank you for putting in this extra effort to be a part of this program because it's just, I'm really excited to see how it continues to grow and the impact that it can have. And so just, you know, thanks for putting in the time and sharing with us your stories because they're, they're really impactful and just really appreciate you.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think the program's so cool. When you first told us about it, I was really excited about it. And talk just for a moment, how many people applied the first time? How many did you have to defer to the other cohorts?
So I had 21 people apply and I deferred five. So the reason for that is, you know, we really wanted to have, we, you can kind of see some from the pictures, but we did a lot of activities and group work and, and I liked the number four, so we can get in four groups of four. So already the 16, the five people that I've deferred are already committed for the fall. So I'm hopeful that when we share kind of what we've done and where we've gone with it, that we have more applicants. But I was really happy with the 21, so.
I think this is just a great demonstration of the Limburg life skills applying to everyone in the district, not just to our students and that we have all those skills demonstrated at every level of administration and employment. So I think it's, it's a really great program. Thanks for doing it.
So at this point, we're going to do a little pivot ourselves and thank you guys for being here. Very much appreciated.
Can we make implementing Thumbs Up Thursday part of the compass goals, please?
Okay, so we've been talking about the classified market study for some time. It's classified in, in our world means support staff or non-educators. We're going to need Colin to click on the link that says classified market study results. What we want to share with you this evening are the findings of this study. This has been a year-long study. It started, really, the why behind this is because we are, as a school district, able to get a lot of information about other K-12 organizations. And when we're comparing our, our, our salaries and our wages to other school districts with regard to educators, that's pretty easy to do. That's easy data to get. It's pretty easy to compare and we can make that happen. What we're not as able to do in human resources is to look out in the private sector and compare ourselves with private businesses, hospitals, universities, other places that we really do compete with when it comes to our support staff. They're not just looking for work in schools. An elementary teacher is probably only looking for work in K-12 schools, but Mike, that was just here, can go anywhere and do what he does. And so we really need to understand what does that market look like? So with regard to that, we talked about how can we, how can we make this happen? And bringing in a, a third party, somebody that, that this is their expertise was, was the idea. And so we bid, we bid this work out for consultancy. We partnered with Parkway School District and Webster. So the three districts looked together and we landed on Educational Management Solutions as our consultant. Fred Corn is the CEO. He's here tonight and he'll be here to answer any questions. He knows really the, the granular, the, you know, the analysis and those kinds of things. But I will say tonight, this, this report to you is going to be very broad. It's going to be very, very much a summary, 20,000-foot view for the sake of time. But if you do have some very specific questions, I know that Fred will be willing to, to walk you through those. So if we can go to the next slide. We talked about Educational Management Solutions and I know you've had access to the slideshow and this is some of their credentials. We can go on to the next slide. We talked about- We talked about Fred and he's been doing this a long time and was great to work with and we appreciate him and we'll hear maybe from him a little, in a little bit. Go to the next slide, please. These are some of the places that EMS has worked with and you can see a lot of familiar, a lot of familiar schools on here in the bi-state area of Missouri and Kansas. Next slide, please. And then finally, we talked about our why and that's, and that's here. And why did we do this? Well, we really needed to look outside ourselves. We needed to look out into that private sector. So if you would go to the next slide, I'm moving fast, Dr. Lake. She'd be proud of me. I just went through four slides in about 30 seconds. What I'd like to point out here before I turn it over to Dr. Mack to talk about the findings, we really needed to determine what is, and I think this is the heavy lifting in this work. You have to determine what is a competitive, what is the competitive market? What, what wage is competitive? And to do that, it's different with every position. It's different in different industries and fields. And what, what, what Fred and his team focused in on was they did a massive amount of analysis of all different positions, taking our job classifications and looking out there in the marketplace and finding out what is the median. And if we can go to the next slide, I believe that's where I'm focused here, that second paragraph, what is the market median? And for competitive and analytical purposes, you identify that and then anything 5% above or 5% below that range, that is your competitive market range. We wanted to determine our salaries, schedules and wages, which of those are within that range, which are below the range and which are above the range. And I would say that we were not wildly surprised by what we found. Our findings generally were that it's a lot like a bell curve. Most of our job classifications are in the competitive range. That's great news. We have some below that we're going to identify tonight and share that we're going to have to work on and there'll be some next steps and, and Joelle will talk about that in the budget prep. We also found some, happy to note that we found some that we're, we're beating the competition and we're 5% or, or more above the competitive market median. So again, not a, not a lot of a-haz here as far as wow, we're really in a bad place or we're, you know, we are in that, in that range where we should be with most job classifications. With that said, I will turn it over to Dr. Mack to talk about the positions that were studied and where they landed in that range. You probably want this, don't you?
Actually, go back really quick. Okay, so just to kind of walk you through the process a little bit. So we worked really closely with Fred and his team to review all of our job descriptions. He also, him and his team met with our classified supervisors really to understand the roles and the responsibilities of our positions. They did an analysis of our district wages and all of our salary schedules, asked a lot of questions and together we kind of came to have understanding of how we developed our schedules and where people are at as they fit on the schedule. So if you go to the next slide, these are the job classifications that we studied. So under each job classification are the specific positions. So for example, under early childhood education support staff, that includes our assistant facilitators, our facilitators, our early learner leads. Underneath building assistants, that includes office building assistants, library building assistants. So these are kind of the broader categories that we started. So that is on this slide and then the next slide as well.
Can I jump in and say something? I forgot to say.
Yes.
Sorry. It's important to point out, and this question was asked to me in our board advisory, so I wanted to make sure I covered this because it's a great question. We did not study necessarily individuals. We studied positions and salary ranges. So if you have somebody that's been here for 25 years, their salary might be above or in the competitive market, but the salary schedule as a whole may, may live, exist below the, the competitive range. So if you say to somebody, hey, you're doing fine, you've been here for 25 years and you're in the competitive market, that's not really what we're after. We want to attract and retain great people. To attract someone, you can't say, if you come to Lindbergh and work for 25 years and your 25th year, you'll be in a competitive salary range, right? So I just wanted to explain that there are some individuals that are, that are, look to be doing great when you just look at their salary, but you have to understand what does it look like if somebody new started? Where would they be in the middle of their career and the end? That was how the study was conducted.
Thank you. Okay, if you go to the next slide, so let's get to the findings. So just a reminder, we did below market, above market and at market. And they determined it to be at market if it's within that plus or minus 5% of the market median. So like Dr. McKinney said, there weren't a lot of surprises. So some of our positions that are harder to fill are below the market by 5% or more. So we have before and after school care and that's specifically our Flyers Club aides that come in at that 1354 rate. Building assistants, crossing guards, they primarily are building assistants. We do have a couple of schools where we just have crossing guards. Early childhood education support staff. So again, that includes assistant facilitators, facilitators and the early learner leads. And then our part-time security assistants, they come in at 1533 and so that was below the market. And if you go to the next slide, so our, some bright spots. So our teaching assistants and parents as teachers are doing wonderfully. They are above the market by 5% or more. And then the next slide shows all of our positions that are at market. And so this includes their starting rate is at market median and then the final step outpaces the market median. And that is because each step on the salary schedule, they get that 2.4% cost of living increase. And so these are all our positions that are at the market.
And I would just say that's a great piece for retention, that 2.4. And a lot of times it would be more than that depending on the budget allowances for raises and things. But at the least, the 2.4 is that COLA or cost of living allowance that continues to matriculate up and encourages people to stay in the district.
And so on years where the raise is, was, is more than 2.4%, the base is just adjusted upward. And so those are our findings that we have. Joelle is going to talk about next steps in her budget presentation. What questions might you have for us about these findings?
How did we come out again, or, or as compared to the partner districts that went with us on this? Like, you know, there were, there were a couple others that.
So we, so we had, in the, in the, in the kind of deeper dive, we had an entire spreadsheet that Fred and his team created that was K-12 and another spreadsheet that was external, basically. And the, what you see up there could, could basically cover both, both tabs in that spreadsheet. But yes, those building assistants, let's pick that group. That group was behind in K-12 and then something that they might, now their, building assistance was a hard one to figure out, a place to compare outside K-12. But behind in K-12, and then if you could find something out there that was similar also in that area as well. So this is a combination of those two spreadsheets, those two tabs, if you will. Fred, do you want to add to that at all?
That's exactly correct. What we found was that it, it's always important to look at both the school market, the K-12 market and also post-secondary, non-school market. In this case, what we found was they really mirrored each other to a really high extent. And so what you're seeing very much could, could also speak to what we found as we looked at the K-12 market.
So when you're comparing the K-12 versus the not K-12, was it mostly just looking at the different like qualifications and requirements that the job needed from an individual to get that job or how, like what, what, what did you use to use the comparison?
That's a great question. So as, as they said, we spoke with the, we, we got all of your current information job descriptions. We also spoke with supervisors to make sure that we understood really what each job does, what the, the competencies needed to perform the duties of those jobs, what the levels of responsibilities are. And so when we did the market analysis, we really didn't look at job titles. What we wanted to do was we, we reached out to each of those employers and said, do you have anyone that does the majority of these things at this level? And those are the ways that we found apples-to-apples matches.
Why the 5% is the defining range?
Yeah. You know, everything is, is a bit arbitrary, but what we found is that when we look at the, the most important thing is to draw a line as to what is competitive. And we choose median in most cases. We give median an average, but the average is, can be swayed by one or two aberrantly high or aberrantly low market sources. And so the median is always the midpoint. It's the most stable of the two numbers. We do have some school districts that say, you know, we, we see ourselves as in a different light than that. And so we have some school districts that say, what would we do if we wanted to compare? What would it look like if we wanted to compare it 70th percentile of the market or 40th percentile of the market? And so the really, the key is finding that, that competitive range. And then 5% plus or minus really just gives some variation so that the market is always going to be precise to a point, right? And then it's like a, a magnifying glass. And the more you're at a microscope, the more you zoom in, it gets brighter, clearer and clearer and clearer and then blurrier and blurrier and blurrier. And so if you try to zoom in too much, you lose the analysis. And so that we have just found across the nation, we work with school districts across the nation, we only work with education systems. And we've found that that plus or minus 5% is, is typically the, the zone that you can see clearly without trying to be overly specific.
Is there a place or a range or I guess a difference in salary that you have found in your work where somebody's willing to accept a slightly lower salary because the environment is so good, because the relationships are good, because the district is good versus going for the highest salary just because it's the highest salary?
Yeah. And, and so when we look at, at market sources, especially outside of the K-12 market, we want to be really careful to find jobs that are apples-to-apples matches. If I am a, a, and, and this doesn't, not trying to say anything negative towards any school position, but there are different personalities that will land themselves in different points in a person's career where I'm going to land in different areas. And so if I am an electrician, I could go work for a construction company and potentially make more. But the, the culture, the, the flexibility, the, the, right, retirement.
Health insurance.
Yeah. And just the fact that, you know, we don't, we don't get laid off if we didn't get the next construction project. All of those things are really important. That's why you didn't see any construction companies on here. It's not that we didn't want to provide the data, it's that it's not meaningful data because the jobs aren't apples-to-apples jobs.
And Joelle, your comment raises a good question. Did, did we consider the full, the full package of benefits and, and compare that across the board, not just?
We do, we do look at that annually ourselves. And like when we talk about the next steps, I'm going to talk a little bit about, without an external person, we wanted an independent review of the outside market. Like you said, Brian said that's harder to gather that data. But we have some parameters every year that we look at and total compensation is part of that. As part of the end of this study, what we want to do is as wages are implemented for the next year, we would like to run a report and give all of our support staff their full compensation study, which is going to, well, it's going to show their wages plus their benefits. It's going to show what they, the district invests in them annually, which is something that they don't always see. A lot of them look at their bottom line net pay and they don't see the other side of how much money we are investing them in insurance and in retirement. So that's going to be the final part of this is all the support staff will get that report that shows total compensation.
I think you brought up an interesting point too, because where we were below market are typically positions that don't have a lot of extra benefits.
That's right. Fringe benefits don't, don't exist with those positions because they're part-time. So that's an excellent, excellent question. So we do have to focus more on wages with regard to those. I would also add to, to Joelle's point is that we also look at some per diem because we, as a school district and Lindbergh even probably at a higher range than even other school districts, we provide a lot of, of paid time off frankly, a lot of paid holidays, a lot of breaks, good hours, no weekends. Those are things that, that a lot of, a lot of independent and, and private companies don't provide. So that's another piece, a kind of a work-life balance that hard to measure. It's a soft benefit, but it matters, you know?
What are your plans or have you already shared this? Well, you probably haven't shared it yet, but when you do, are you going to share this with the staff and how do you plan on sharing it?
Well, tomorrow, the very first thing that will come out tomorrow to all classified staff is a letter that really summarizes what you've seen this evening. And that will go out to everyone tomorrow and say, this is complete, we've presented it and this is, these are the findings. The next steps really come from the, some things Joelle has to talk about. And if somebody were to reach out to Ally or me tomorrow and, and say, hey, so my, my job is on there, what's next? I'd say, now's the, now's the important work. Give us some time and you know, you'll know before July 1st when that new year begins. So.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you, Fred, for being here. Appreciate it. And your work, of course.
Thank you for allowing us to work with Lindbergh Schools. It was a wonderful experience for us.
Great, great.
Is that my timer? How much time do I have, Dr. Lake? Okay. Well, just kind of teaching and learning, this is a big thing. It's how we support teaching and learning. So there's a lot of work that gets to this date and I know we kind of started this a little bit later this year and I appreciate that. You know, there's been things happening at the state level and federal level and all those kinds of things that have affect, may affect the budget. And so we've kind of wanted to get a little bit further along before we brought it to everyone. But, so go ahead, Colin. This information in this budget report, as I always state, is assumptions as of today. When we do our budget for next fiscal year, which according to the state, we have to adopt it by June 30th, really, we don't know a lot of final numbers. It's a lot of assumptions. So those are things that I want to make sure that everybody on the board understands because as you know, we do bring budget amendments ongoing each board meeting as, and that's as data gets better. But annually, we do have a budgeting timeline and this is the board workshop we have every spring. We adopt it in June and we also have a new thing that we've been using a lot this year and I think it's, it's worked out well is the decision-making matrix. That's if someone comes to the board or, or not the board, well, it could be the board or the cabinet during the course of the year and they have another idea or something they want to add. We have a form that they've been filling out that really explains their idea. It ties it to compass goals and our strategic plan and the why. We try not to add expenditures after the start of the year, but sometimes there's a need for it. So this year, we did have all of our people who had an ad for after budget was adopted to work through that tool. And I think it's a learning tool for the user and for the cabinet team. The next one, again, our budget is presented at this time with, because we look at the compass goals at the same time. Our goals and our budget should compare, you know, the dollars are supporting the goals and that's why we want to talk about it at the same time. Always with our budget, we want to be fiscally responsible and transparent. You know, our funds are taxpayer dollars. That's why, how a school districts are funded. Some get a little bit more state aid, but ours is highly local funded. We do want to offer competitive wages, salary and a benefit package. And I do appreciate the board this year allowing us to go out to an outside contractor and get a independent study on the support wages. That was something that hasn't been done in a long time and I appreciate it. Another item that we look at according to salaries is our class sizes and we have a great matrix that Dr. Lake brought to Lindbergh Schools and that's a great tool, especially for budget people because it gives us parameters and it's good to have parameters on budget. We always look at enrollment changes. We are, this year, we have grown a little bit over the course of the year and so that has an impact on state revenue. We want to look at operational efficiency, efficiency in all areas. Thanks for having that in your first compass goal is efficiency and operational efficiency. We don't stop that. So that's ongoing all the time. And then the big thing for us is fund balance, balance management and reserve management. So our goal for this year's budget is a balanced budget with, again, continued efficiency work to build and maintain operating reserves. If you remember last year's budget, we had a goal of building back reserves. We are on track to meet that goal. So as we're this early in the game with the assessed valuation data we have and that we're, we're looking at balanced, but really we want to keep trying to just put some money back in the bank. Next slide. This is a current picture of three years of our operation funds. This isn't all the funds in the district. It's just the operation ones, the one that keeps light on, the one that pays salaries. And the orange line is the current year. So as you look at this picture right now, you can see we're higher than last year. And so we believe that trend is going to get us till the end of the year. And we are going to focus, like I said, even though it's balanced, we want to keep, know that it's important to keep dollars in savings. Next slide is why we have reserve funds. Again, pay for unexpected costs, revenue shortfalls, extreme events. Fund, we did a lot of strategic spend down in the last five or six years where we did have fund balances at a certain level and the board said, hey, we want to spend some of those things down. We want to improve our facilities. And so we made strategic spending to lower fund balance. And then we got to the point of that target and now we want to maintain and build back. The next one, we do have a fund balance policy. I'm not going to read it to you, but that explains what the purpose of fund balance and the why behind keeping it there. And then also a goal as to what we want our fund balance to be. So now onto the good stuff. Revenue estimates, again, assumptions as with the data we know today. We do know for sure that ninety percent of our money is local. This is a heavily locally funded district. We do get some state aid, tiny bit of federal aid. But the local funding, our taxpayers are the ones that support our bottom line. One of the big things when we look at local, I think, did I skip a slide? I have a different one. Maybe that one's not on there, but that's okay. We can go to that one. Nope, I got it. CPI. So the big thing with being primary locally funded is when we set our tax rate as far as our funding based on property in, in our district, we have to know what the inflation rate is for that year. And the state of Missouri, state assess, state auditor's office and the state tax commission, they look at the inflation rate in December. So every December, they pull a number from a certain date. Because if you look at inflation rate, you could pull one every day for a million different objects. They pull this one. And this is a history of the inflation rate that they use for the past, back to 2015. So this year's inflation rate, 2024, December 24, is the most that we can grow locally in revenue based on the properties that existed in both years. Next slide. So there is something in Missouri, there's called Missouri Hancock Amendment. And what it says is when we look like our district is going to grow higher than the inflation rate, we have to roll back our levy in order to protect the taxpayers from large spikes in assessed valuation. And so Missouri has a Hancock Amendment that is a hold harmless for taxpayers. Next slide. So when CPI increase, when assessed valuation is higher than CPI or five percent, there is a cap on growth. It's five percent. So we did experience in the last couple of years where inflation in December was above five percent. I've been in this industry thirty years and I had never seen it that high. So in those two years when it was higher than the five percent, the state and tax commission, state auditor's office caps it at five. Next slide, tiny little numbers. And they're really tiny, but this is a history since 2021 school year to this current school year. And it is an illustration of non-reassessment year versus reassessment years. A non-reassessment years is when the assessor does not go out and really they don't look at a lot of property changes in values. So those years, we don't see a lot of growth in assessed valuation. Sometimes it's one percent, sometimes it's less than, I think it looks like here twenty-four, twenty-five. Our total assessed valuation, all categories went down point two nine percent. The good thing is there, they don't take any money away, but we really don't see any growth. That is why we'll see with our raises and how we work with, you know, three, two or three-year agreements that it's the reassessment years where most of the growth in wages are. Because those are the years that we get more revenue because of assessed valuation. This information shows that for the next year, St. Louis County, on reassessment years, they do give us an estimate of growth in all categories. And when I say all categories, we're talking about commercial, personal property, residential and agricultural. We have a little bit of agricultural property in our district, but of course, we're mostly commercial, real, and real estate, residential and personal property. So the combined of all areas this year was fourteen point eight one percent, which was again, a high number. We thought maybe we'd be seeing back some normalcy of getting back to single digits. But as you can see, these last few years here, the last reassessment year it was eleven and the reassessment year prior to that was almost nine. So this district continues, values in this district for property continue to grow. And that's a good thing for property owners. Again, taxpayers are protected from that because of, we're only allowed to grow two point nine percent. So in this case, when assessed valuation is fourteen point eight one percent, we have to roll back the levy in each category to only grow two point nine. And I'll talk a little bit more about that because as you know, our residential tax rate is at the lowest levy. It's at two seventy-five. And it really got to that two seventy-five because over the years, our property values at Lindbergh have continued to grow. The state has a number at two seventy-five when they say that that's what a district needs to support learning and maintain equity. So our, we're getting close in all of our categories to be at the minimum tax rate. Commercial, agricultural, agricultural actually went under this year. And so we're getting close to be at two seventy-five in all areas. Next slide. So here's the big estimate, new revenue, which means added revenue is four point nine million total for next year. The majority of that, of course, is in our, our tax budget. We also, besides just growth, we get new construction. It's property in the district that has a major change. Like when you look at the Bass Pro Shop, when it went from pretty much, it dilapidated. Shopping mall to that, there was a large, that's considered new construction because the property value is a lot higher. We're looking at a ninety-five percent collection rate from all of our payers. And then I also wrote on here, the current taxes, one of the items that we're watching very closely is the senior tax credit that is new in St. Louis County this year. It's a good thing for seniors that their real estate taxes are capped, but that will be an impact on the long run on the district. Delinquent taxes is another item. We did not budget for that last year, any revenue, and we didn't budget for it this year. With the growth levels in Lindbergh and assessed valuations increasing, we do see more protests on taxes than we've seen in the past. And so delinquent taxes is a hard number to do because of the protest number. So we are going to budget zero in, in that item next year as well. State funding, state funding, there's three areas, even though they're a smaller amount. State sales tax or Prop C is a one cent tax on all purchases across the state that is collected by DESI. And then they send it out to schools based on weighted ADA, our attendance. So there is a small increase plan for that, nineteen dollars per weighted average daily attendance for next year. The basic formula, they do have put out those numbers as far as state adequacy numbers. And I think the governor's budget is not quite passed yet, but they're.
No, just quickly, they, in the senate, they proposed to increase the SAT to the, the full amount of seventy-one and some change, seven thousand one hundred and some change. Right now, it's sixty-seven, sixty-seven. Yep. So we'll see where it goes. But originally, the governor said they weren't going to fully fund the formula. But the senate appropriations committee said that they were going to request that money. So we'll see where it goes.
Yeah, it's not final yet, so we, we hope that that money comes to play. That sounds like what our, what the, what they want to do and we hope it comes to that point. Transportation again is fully funded. We had several years where that wasn't. What fully funded means is, not that we get every dollar back for transportation, but it's seventy-five percent of the eligible expenditures. Not all the transportation we do is an eligible expenditure, field trips, sports trips, all of that. We don't get reimbursed on that, but the route miles, we do. And then we have a new grant this year that is supporting one of our new programs. So that's great to have a grant support and expenditure as well. The next slide.
Can I ask a quick question on the legislation? Is, is, are they tying that to any, is it just period? We're going to increase it period or are they tying it to if open enrollment passes and if this passes?
No, it's not legislation. It's to seven, was it seven twenty-one that passed last year and they increased the funding? Well, they didn't fully fund that. So all this is, is the committee, the budget committee and the senate is saying, we are proposing the budget. So it's not tied to any legislation. They're just saying that, you know, we're going to request those dollars. They also requested not to fund the voucher, the thirty-five million or whatever it was the governor wanted to put. So the senate, it's Lincoln Huff out of Springfield. He's, you know, he's a strong advocate of public schools. And so he has requested those changes in the budget, so we'll see where it goes.
He did make a nice statement that said, you know, when we say we're going to fund something, we're going to fund it. You know, we're not just going to start.
And if you remember, that was our big fear is that they would, we're going to tout, oh, look how much we increased funding, but then not fund it. And so.
And that has happened many years in the past.
Joel's.
I was.
Yeah, he's exactly right. You know, if we say we're going to do something, we're going to do it. And so that's where, that's where we are right now, so we'll see how it progresses.
Yeah. That's why I said we don't have all the data when we're at this point. So we just keep an eye on it consistently. So on the expenditure side, again, we're looking at, to add four point now nine million dollar budget, a balanced budget, again, with some hopes of being more efficient expending and maximizing more revenue and building a little bit of fund balance, but balanced budget is a goal. The next slide is really the detail behind expense expenditures. And as you know, wages and benefits are the largest portion of our budget. That's what we are in is a people business, so that's where most of our money goes. We did, were able to, thanks, our NEA team and our negotiation team did finalize their negotiations and come up with a two-year agreement. And so that's a five percent increase for next year, which I always like to put on there, the five percent is step in base. So Brian kind of alluded to and Ally, that each year, the way we have salary schedules with two point four percent is pretty much guaranteed, it is guaranteed. You really never want to freeze a salary schedule. That's a bad word to say. So every year up to our, most of our salary schedules go to twenty-five steps. That there's a two point four percent increase in there, in the base. And then when it's a five percent increase, what happens is the step is two point four and then we change the base, we tweak it upward by two point six. And that's how we get a five percent is really how much your, your total average salary schedule goes up. We did not do anything with extra duty this year. That five percent doesn't apply to that. But they do have a step schedule and they will step through. So that might be something that we look at in the future is our extra duty schedule.
We did just kind of redo the extra duty schedules though too?
Yeah, it wasn't long ago.
So we may look at it next year, see where we are and we may add some money to it next year. But it's, you know, and the LNEA representatives are out here and they know where we are. We, we try to put as much money in the teaching salary. And then every other year, we try to increase if we can, if we feel like we have dollars in the extra duty, extra pay. But we would rather put more money in the teacher salary schedule.
Several years ago, we did do, as Jamie was part of that, a really hard look at our, our extra duty had not been taken, looked at for a long time.
Courtney back there, I know she took some, you took some shrapnel, I know occasionally.
Yeah. It was a lot and was a lot of work. I mean, there was a whole year of progress. So we feel like it's still really competitive in that area and we'll just, but that's something we can't get behind on. We don't want to get as far behind as we were when we just caught up. We can't get that far behind again. And then we've looked at for the next year, it's again, a non-reassessment year when our local revenue growth is at its minimum of three percent. And so a three percent wouldn't be the two point four percent base and a minor tweak to the, I mean, a step is two point four and then a minor tweak to the base for that other percentage. I do want to talk here, this is about the support staff market study because there will be some areas on the support side that will see a larger than a five percent increase. What our standard parameter every year is, you know, without the outside market study, we do take a look at the EdPlus schools, St. Louis market EdPlus schools. That's a very good resource for our local schools, pretty much every district in St. Louis County. And in Jefferson County, Franklin County use that data. They do a comparative market study annually and then they release that information to all school districts. So every year, on a consistent basis, we take that data and sit down and look at all the schools in St. Louis County. And what we have done is based on information from the board is that we want to be really seven to ten on the St. Louis County school districts. I mean, we know we're never going to be in SSD and we know we're never going to be at Clayton. So that is a great tool for the budget manager to look at, where do we want to be? We, we're not going to be first. And we can just say that out loud based on our demographics and our assessed valuation.
And it's really the top ten is what we've kind of changed that conversation because there are certain districts. But when we say the top ten, you know, seven years ago, when we got here, we could have been there, but the gap was so big between where we were and wherever we're even, either say we're sitting in eighth in the county, we're shrinking.
The gap is a lot smaller.
That gap is a lot closer. I mean.
Couple hundred bucks.
I said it today in the leadership meeting, you know, I felt like when I got here, Lindbergh was doing all this amazing training of teachers and putting all this institutional energy in them and then they were leaving to go to other districts to, because the money was so different. We don't see that anymore at all. So we have people leave us, oh, it's where I live, it's where my kids go to school. But very rarely is it for money. I, I can't think of any time in the last few years that it's been that reason. So anyways, and that's a tribute to the seven of you sitting here and the board members before you that gave that charge when I was hired seven years ago. We need to fix our facilities, we need to pay people more money, but we're not going to raise anybody's taxes. How are you going to figure that out? So together, we've kind of figured that out and we'll continue to do it. And we're very fortunate, I'll brag on her really quick, to have her sitting there helping between the two of us figuring it out.
Yep. Well, I don't need applause, but it's a good board that gives good parameters, it makes it easier. But like you said, that gap is a lot smaller. So when I say we're, you know, in each category, we'll be a little bit different, but it may take three hundred dollars to get to the next level. But we know that that's where we want to be. If somebody's falling below that, then we have an issue. And I will tell you, those three categories that we mark here with the thirteen fifty-four rate, because we look at the starting, the minimum and the maximum, we look at both of those levels. And in those eight categories, we were the lowest in St. Louis County far as a starting rate. And we're looking at getting those numbers to fifteen this year based on budget parameters. And we really need that to be a second phase in the future to get it really where the market is. But we'll move off of the bottom of the list, which, again, thank you for allowing us to do that study. I think that'll have a major impact on some of our support team. So those groups are going to see a larger, of course, than five percent increase because we had the market study and we're going to get them closer to where they need to be. And across that board, there are other positions, you know, not just those categories that we will be tweaking as well. And so that was just all results from, from the study.
When you say a second phase after the fifteen, is, do we have enough information to know like timing wise of that second phase?
We, the, we're going to try to look in the next year. We'll see how, some of these funding things that are out there that we're concerned about. Maybe we'll have more information about the senior tax credits. I mean, there was some things in the legislation about capping AV growth. And the numbers behind that that we provided for our fiscal note were very scary. You know, they wanted to cap AV growth, not at that five percent, but they wanted to put it at a two percent, you know? And we looked back ten years on, you know, on, I think we looked back, I think it was six years, six years on that for our fiscal note for our lobbyist. And that was like eleven million dollars to the district over six years. So I'm hopeful that those kinds of things that we put together for our lobbyists will show that schools will be decimated.
Joel, I haven't shared this with her, it got their attention. That, that conversation has really slowed down about capping that. It's, it's been eye-opening for.
We already have a protection in there with the rollback. You know, so just, this is a odd time and all over the place. But our goal would be to make another, make another step next year towards that. I would say probably sixteen twenty-five is, you know, really the competitive marking weight in that area. But this is a big start, you know, a very big start. The next slide. These are numbers on staff additions. We're really not adding a lot of staff like we have in, in past years. And our matrix for teachers helps out with that. A lot of this is programming, I'll have to say, or needs where needs have increased. Kennedy halftime counselors because needs have increased. This is all information that Brian meets with each principal. And talks about staffing on one-to-one meetings, Ally's a part of that as well, where they go over what they need in their buildings and the why. And then you have Tara and Jill in their departments looking at the services we offer and the counts in those areas, ELL, our social work, our special ed. We, we always look at those numbers and where we need services. So those are things in that area. The teaching assist. The teaching assistance at the middle schools, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about that. It's a little bit different than a normal teaching assistant.
Sure, but we're getting close on time. So and you got quite a few more slides, okay.
So that's just something, a new program that we're going to have at the middle school level that Tara can talk about later. CNA was, of course, the grant that we got on that program, adding that position. The real world coordinator, we talked about that in a lot of Tara's slides. We did add a few extra duty ones that we would like to add. Those are recommended. Ally meets with those groups based on student participation and programs that are growing so that we can offer a lot of that at our high school level. Our admin interns that we've had this last year will now become permanent assistant principals. I know that's something that is very welcomed with the buildings. A lot happens in the buildings and those will be permanent positions starting next year. We did increase summer school pay. We were very low in St. Louis County as far as that. We were at 25 and we're going to 3350. So when you add all this up and the next slide, which are just the non fun things that aren't related to people, but happen every year. Transportation contract renewal, food service, utility rates, I said, these are the fun, not the fun things. We did add a little bit more money to the uniform and official budget for athletics, a little bit more formal band. Teaching learning program, again, are things that are new programs that are happening. Avid Aviation Amp, things that we're investing in kids with programming. So there's some budget increases in that area. We are keeping an eye on our self insured medical fund. I've talked about that enough of that the whole year. We do believe our pharmacy is making some changes, but that's not going to be a quick change. So we're keeping an eye on that area. And then, of course, this did come up in the finance committee meeting last night. We're monitoring any expenditure related increases from the federal things changing, state things changing. That's going to be a close eye on those areas. The last slides here are debt. We can't get away from a budget without talking about debt. These are our certificates of participation or our bond issues. As you know, we're getting ready to issue another part of our $150 million bond issue approved last April. We're looking at that in June, another 75 million. We're ready with the projects. We need the money in the bank. We've done a lot in a year to spend those dollars. So the taxpayers should be really happy to see we're saying what we're doing and things are getting done. So that will happen this year. No change in the debt service levy, of course, because we did a no tax increased bond issue. And then, of course, our key takeaways at the end is to be sure, I'll wait the very last one. Colin, keep going. I went through debt fast. Is that our budgets should always align with compass goals. We always want a balanced budget. We want any new revenue to equal the new expenditures. The focus in that area is, of course, on staff and teachers to remain efficient. Keep the eye out on long range planning, manage our debt, which is another thing we do with look at refinancing when rates are down. And then maintain our reserves to meet cash flow throughout the school year. So there you go. The big detailed budget will come in June.
So my question, because you knew I had one, is so if we're doing it, if we're balancing it where the estimated revenue is 4.9 and all these estimated expenditures are 4.9, how does that help the fund balance increase?
Well, because we'll continue to look at efficiencies and, you know, where we can reduce costs or make changes. Look at more maximizing revenue. Our goal is to keep adding to fund balance. It's not going to be to the degree we added to it this year. But those strategic, you know, using different dollars for different things, seeking grant money. We are going to continue to try to keep that going upward. But I think this year is going to make a difference on that, on that number.
And And it doesn't need to go up that much.
No, well, she, I mean,
I want it a little higher.
It's not like she's under underestimating, but we are always conservative and typically things, revenue sometimes. But it's not to a point where it's like, you know, all this money. But I think the 5.9 and we're like, or what are we, 4.9? And then we're like four, four, five or something like that already going into the budget. There's like 400,000.
And, you know, at the time of year with the revenue that we don't know the final numbers.
Yeah.
We don't even know what the legislators are going to pass for the state budget by the end. So and then for assessed valuation, we won't know that data from St. Louis County until late September. And so as the numbers come in better, then we'll see those areas. So I mean, that is still on our minds that we do want to add to fund balance. It's not just to stay balanced, but we're not trying to get it back to large reserves. We're not in a desperate situation. The budget's not broken. You know, it's just time to add some money back to savings so that we have it there for future needs.
Yeah, and I mean, if you have too big of a reserve, that means you're not spending the money on students for learning that you should be. And so I, I just
Well, and I think
For just in case.
And you sitting here know that we talk about being in that range of 22 to 28. We found that getting below that 22 makes us really, really nervous. And so we don't want to do that.
Our cash flow, not that we're in trouble, but to try to get through the whole year.
It's, and again, it's like we've talked about, it's not a revenue issue. It's a cash flow. And we walked you guys through these cash flow things. And, you know, I will say this with our NEA, they, they know where the money's going and where it is and all of that as well. And so we're as open and honest and transparent about that. But we have, I believe, over the next few years, we have the ability to continue to offer, you know, competitive, as long as some of this stuff doesn't go crazy, competitive raises and be saving some
Saving some dollars.
Saving responsibly to then say we got one time things that we need to do again or whatever, so.
I mean, the cash flow whole thing is because really we're so locally funded that all, we get one check in January. And then we got to live on that check all year. And as you know, this year, that that check was delayed.
And that check didn't show up till February.
And so being paid once a year on local taxes is just a cash flow thing. So we have a goal of where we want to be with fund balance, and we're going to continue to be efficient and find money to put it there. You know?
I know.
Okay. All right, thank you.